Okay, so, thank you everyone. And Jane, we're set?
Yes, we are.
Thank you. This is the Board of Trustees' regular meeting. It's May 12th, 2020. The time is 7:30, 3 PM. This is meeting number 202008. Jane, can you please take the roll?
President Barry.
Here.
Trustee Olenichuk.
Here.
Trustee Desmond.
Yeah.
Trustee Phelan.
Here.
Trustee Vorder.
Here.
Trustee Mallow.
Here.
Trustee Stalker.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Jane. Would everyone rise for the pledge, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, hello, everyone. This is our virtual meeting. I want to remind people to mute if you are not speaking. That will really help with the background noise and help people who need to hear it. So I'm informed by our clerk, we have no public comments. Is that correct? And Jane, you appear to be muted.
Correct.
Item four on the agenda is approval of the meeting minutes for the regular meeting minutes, 202007 dated April 28th, 2020. May I have a motion, please, on number four?
Motion approved.
Thank you. That was Trustee Mallow and seconded by?
Second.
Trustee Stalker. Thank you.
Yes.
Any discussion, gentlemen? Okay, let's call a vote, please.
Trustee Olenichuk.
Yes.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Phelan.
Yeah.
Trustee Vorder.
Yes.
Trustee Mallow.
Yes.
Trustee Stalker.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. We're going to go new business by village trustees. Agenda item five. Let's start in District One. Trustee Desmond.
Thank you, Mayor. I have no business.
Thank you. District Two, Trustee Olenichuk.
Yes, Madam Mayor, Board. I have one topic of business. I've been in contact with many of our businesses, not only in the Village of Oaklawn and in Second District, but talking to many business owners. I know that other trustees have been in contact and had conversations with business owners. And I will share with you the concerns right now that have been brought to my attention. This is dealing with car dealerships, restaurants, bars, and other forms of business like hairstylists and hairdressers. Basically, we have some of these businesses that have been long-term, longstanding businesses in the Village of Oaklawn that if they don't see light at the end of the tunnel, they're barely keeping their heads above water. And they are finding it hard to make ends meet. We're also hearing from many residents that are out of work and are barely making ends meet, and they're concerned about what the future holds. And there are concerns about what our state government is mandating to us. And are those terms and conditions reasonable? I believe that as a village board, we owe it to our constituents and we owe it to our business community to start questioning some of the things that are requirements. We all know that we are going through a very difficult time. This virus is real. But as you look at the statistics, we are getting better at handling it. We are doing the right things to continue to get better at handling it. But right now, whether you listen to national government or local government, it is something that's going to be with us. And we need to start looking for ways to bring people back to work. And I don't think it's in a plan that is requiring that there's going to be a vaccine, because quite honestly, we can't even assure that there's going to be a vaccine in three months, six months, or a year. But we do know that we need to start bringing people socially back into work environments, so that way we can make sure that the people that are in the protected class that have existing conditions, pre-existing conditions, that have health concerns, that aren't able to go out, are comfortable with what they're doing, but also let people who choose to and let our businesses that choose to be in business do so with some good exercise of some common practices. I've had some of the businesses review some of the requirements and the plan that our government has. And quite honestly, if you look at what the state mandate is, we're looking at, it looks like sometime north of July and August before we even have an opportunity to get back into some normalcy. So I'm willing to work with our village board. I know I've talked to a number of the trustees. And Madam Mayor, I've even talked with you about this. But I know that the governor is looking at the state as a whole. But we, as village trustees, should have some ability and with working with our community to be able to start putting together a plan to get our businesses and our community back to normal. So with that being said, I know that we've got a big threshold to go through, because the governor's mandate is good through the end of the month. I do know that we've had legal opinion that the governance mandate is binding, but that there could be some wiggle room for us as a municipality to use our home rule. And I'm just asking for the opportunity to start approaching the subject of taking a reasonable approach to bring our community back online and start getting back to some normalcy, making sure that we follow good medical procedures, making sure that we follow good social separation. But we need to lead in this time. And I don't fully believe that the governor can continue to do what he's doing without jeopardizing people's ability to provide for income for themselves and to provide for income for other people and continue going forward as a state. We have to start moving forward. And I believe we need to put pressure to our governor to start making more reasonable accommodations so we can start opening up this state.
Thank you, Trustee Olenichuk. Okay, District Three, Trustee Mallow.
Yes, Madam Mayor. The only item I have tonight is in regards to the farmer's market that we normally put on on Wednesday mornings. We are looking to do that starting June 3rd. We are looking to make sure that we separate and do all the things that we need to do to have this farmer's market go on. So if you are interested, you can reach out to Lindsay and make sure that you're able to get a spot during our farmer's market. So that's really all I have tonight. Thank you.
So it will be every week, starting June 3rd? That's great news. Great news. Thank you. And District Four, Trustee Vorder.
Thank you, Mayor. I have no business.
District Five, Trustee Stalker.
I'd just like to add my support to what Alex has said. I believe there are ways to responsibly open other businesses in the Village of Oaklawn. I think we can do it with social distancing, proper protocols, and make sure that the people that attend the businesses are well-protected and don't have as much risk as without taking precautions. So I'd like to make sure that we work to move forward and some different type of business activity that will help save the businesses in Oaklawn and actually help produce some revenue for the village. The village is suffering right now. We're looking at layoffs, and there's a lot of problems that we're facing as well. And I just feel that there is a way to get back to work in a responsible way, and I'd like to work toward that. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Stalker. District Six, Trustee Phelan.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to dovetail on Trustee Olenichuk and Stalker's great points. I couldn't agree more. I sent the board today what I call the compilation of the Cook County Medical Examiner's death data, going back to March 16th, the first recorded death of the COVID virus. Obviously, we know that there were deaths before that, but that's when they began to start testing for it. And then trying to determine to the best we could, you know, what the data is showing us. There's, it almost becomes cliche now. You turn on the news and you hear people talking about following the data and following the science. And oftentimes, it's got a connotation that's condescending, depending on what side of the aisle you are politically or where you stand from an academic standpoint. And unfortunately, from my perspective, it's getting lost. The noise surrounding it is drowning out the actual data. I heard the governor say today or yesterday, our governor, that Illinois is different than Indiana, and Indiana is different than Michigan, as if to suggest the virus pays attention to borders between states or borders between towns. Trustee Stalker said it fast. There is a way to approach this. And in the last three months, I don't know, depending on what news you follow or how many different sources, there's probably been 200,000 predictions, 150,000 different models, 95% of them all wrong. And I think what we can determine based on the data, and it's pretty evident, as you saw in that email I sent, is that this virus targets elderly people who have health problems, almost puts a name on it and forecasts where it's going. As far as Oaklawn is concerned, our nursing homes, of course, are very, very susceptible. And I think either both Trustee Stalker and Olenichuk said that the state, the federal government, in my opinion, should be focusing their efforts and their resources and their money and the Illinois Department of Public Health, not on threats to hairdressers or restaurateurs about opening or churches, about having service, but focusing all of their efforts or our collective efforts on those areas and doing everything we can to make sure they have everything they need, money, PPE, testing kits. I mean, we just look at all the metrics we have. The reports from the hospital, which I think we could all acknowledge, they're certainly not alarmists. And I like the fact that they're not alarmists. Richan, the President of Christ Hospital, has said to me offline that we could be assured that if there is a problem, he won't wait until the last minute to let us know. And he's been good about providing us with an overview. The mayor and I had a couple of discussions about this recently. And there is that temptation, right? The temptation to choose sides, the temptation to run to the polar ends and say, you know, you're a greedy person who just wants to see people die. And I'll say, well, you're just a person who wants to stay locked down forever. And there can be a spectrum of opinions. And I think where we need to fall, having talked to the business owners and the people that are suffering, I don't think it should be lost on any of us, that all of these people that stand in front of microphones at press conferences and government offices, by and large, haven't suffered one bit when it comes to their paychecks. And I don't know if that has anything to do with it, but I can tell you, in my business, I'm dealing with business owners all the time. I've had two clients that have closed, one that's going to close, others that have laid off half the workforce and doesn't or don't believe that they're going to bring back the people they're laying off. These are real and significant issues. We've talked about the social cost. I mentioned in the last meeting, we've had a couple of suicides in Oaklawn, two on the same day. Those are just as bad as somebody passing away from COVID. And all of us know someone who either passed away or has a relative who passed away or a friend who got sick and had a hard time. Doesn't mean that we're not compassionate about that at all. We've got to get away from this notion, that how dare you notion, and say, wait a minute. The mayor and I talked. The one thing that I think we could point to, and I'll finish with this. The infection rate, based on reports today that we saw in the state of Illinois, appear to be 13% to 17%. Again, with the idea being that we are in the early stage of testing, so that the people that are being tested are either likely to be sick, they're encountering people who are sick. So we're still looking at a test sample that is higher than likely than the average population, than me, than you, than the six of us on this video or eight of us who are obviously not sick, but maybe do have the virus. A test, infection rate of 13% to 17%. You know that as that denominator grows and more people get tested, that infection rate's going to go down. But the death rate in the ICU bed rate capacity is what we need to focus on. And I think we can all conclude, we've been successful. The original charge was flatten the curve. That was 57 days ago. You know, first it was 13, then 30, then 45. At some point, we have a responsibility as elected officials. Okay? I don't want to suggest that I know more or less than Governor Pritzker, President Trump, anybody on the other side of the aisle. But let's not also forget that those two individuals and everybody else in this mix are, by and large, they're not epidemiologists, they're not biologists. They come from all different walks of life, and they're relying upon experts who, again, 90% of the time in terms of predictions and modeling, have been wrong. That doesn't mean they're not smart. It just means this is a virus that's not predictable. But in three months' time or so, I think we can conclude it's become somewhat predictable. And I would like to join Trustee Stalker and Trustee Olenichuk in saying, we can put together a plan. Not that defies Governor Pritzker or contradicts somebody else, but that's consistent and complimentary. But in the case of timelines and allowances, you know, look at how we can better adjust and open back up. Because as Bud said, the financials are staggering. You know, we're looking at them every day. We're looking at $8 to $10 million deficit. You know, we're not a $50 billion corporation or organization. $8 to $10 million for us is massive. And I'm glad to hear my fellow board members, including the mayor, when we talk about these things, saying, you know, we have the capacity, we have the brain power. We don't need to be expert in the field of biology or viruses to say, we're going to look at the whole totality of the circumstances and incorporate everybody's needs and risk tolerances and come together with a plan. And I'm happy to work with everybody on that as well.
Madam Mayor, can I just add on to that?
Sure. Trustee Olenichuk.
I think the best quote I got from one of the business owners, who was a local, long-term business owner, is, "I'd rather continue to take the risk that I've had being in business or running a business and practice good practices to serve my patrons and make sure that there's social distancing, handwashing stations, all the things that need to be done, and have a go at trying to salvage my business than to remain with my doors closed, in which I will most certainly be closed and not be able to open up again." So I'm looking to work with the whole board to make this happen, just like Trustee Phelan has outlined and Trustee Stalker.
Thank you, Trustee Olenichuk. Trustee Phelan, anything else?
That's it. Thank you.
You're welcome, sir. I just want to kind of jump on, since we're talking about it. You know, one of the things we look at is the percent of positive infections. And that number in Chicago is slightly higher than the governor's Phase III thing. And in the rest of the regions, it's slightly lower. So we can totally get there. And I think we should expect, you know, by May 28th, May 29th is what I'm hearing, when things might loosen. The other metrics they're looking at is the percent of ICU beds available and the percent of ventilators available. And I'm told, fortunately, the ventilators are available more so than they thought. The doctors are doing a very good job, and the teams, and the therapists and nurses, they're finding ways to rotate the patients. They're not using the ventilators so much. They're actually getting better outcomes through these innovative techniques they're implementing. So if we look at ICU beds, the problem we're going to have is right now, they're readily available. But as we start to open up for elective surgeries, those beds that are allocated in that equation will go away. So it's a catch-22. If you reopen too quickly those ICU beds, then, you know, you lose the ratio. So we're watching that real carefully as well. And, you know, we have an issue. All of us are chomping at the bit to get everyone open. But many of our businesses are licensed and regulated by the state. For example, you can have a local liquor license, but also a state liquor license. You know, you have certain regulations and licenses with the state. A village, you know, it's controversial if we should recommend not being in sync with the state for certain licenses and certain things, because that business would have a huge liability problem as a result. So we have a lot to work through. And I think what everyone can hear from the things people are adding, there are so many nuances to this, it's so complicated. But I applaud this board for wanting to get the businesses open as quickly as possible and get our lives back. And, you know, one more thing real quick. The city of Chicago is working on industry-specific guidelines. So if you're a hair salon, you know, if you're a bar, if you're a church, if you're a daycare, if you're an office, different scenarios. And they should, they tell me they'll have those available within a week or two, and they're going to share those, because we certainly don't have the resources they have. So that would be really, really helpful, I think, to like people who have businesses and want to do what they can, but don't really know. And there's not really guidance coming from the CDC or anywhere else. So it's kind of challenging. So anyway, any other comments on that before we move on?
And Mayor, can I add one more thing?
Certainly.
One of the paragraphs in the village authority, this is our legal opinion, "Village authority upon expiration of the governor's order." And this is what I would recommend, that we work with our state legislators and the governor. This is a great scenario for us. If on May 29th, the most recent executive order expires without renewal, a municipality would have great leeway to reopen on its own schedule. All of the governor's orders are made pursuant to the powers granted to him by the Illinois Emergency Management Agency Act 20ILCS 3305-1 sequi. The governor's executive powers pursuant to Article 5, Section 8 of the Illinois Constitution, the preamble of the Illinois Constitution, which states that the purpose of the Constitution is to provide for health, safety, and welfare of the people. The orders are also contingent on the disaster proclamation, which was last issued April 30th, 2020, and is valid for 30 days. Without such a new proclamation and subsequent executive order, all of the limitations imposed by the state in response to COV-19 pandemic would no longer be operative. And this is what I am going to beg, that we, as a municipality, should be able to enact reasonable rules and regulations to help bring our businesses and our lives back online. And we shouldn't be dictated by the governor, who I believe is in Springfield or up in Chicago. I firmly believe that this is the best way, not only for us, but for the rest of the villages and municipalities in the state of Illinois to be able to continue to operate as we did prior to this executive order. None of us wants to do anything to harm anybody. We want a path to success. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Number six, village managers' report.
No report, Mayor, with the exception of, as everybody has been talking about, with the COVID-19 staff here works on this matter daily as the impacts are going to be felt June, July, August. So that would be it.
Thank you very much. Item seven is the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are routine or have been brought forward at the direction of the Board of Trustees and will be enacted with one motion. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Item 7A is ordinance 2008-19, an ordinance authorizing the disposal of excess vehicles that have reached their useful lifespan. B is ordinance 2008-20, an ordinance authorizing the sale of police department surplus radios, which have reached their useful lifespan. C is ordinance 2008-21, an ordinance amending certain provisions of the Oaklawn Village Code pertaining to rodent control. D is ordinance 2008-22, an ordinance amending Title VIII, Chapter 14 of the Oaklawn Village Code pertaining to recycling for multifamily structures. E is ordinance 2008-23, an ordinance amending certain sections of Title IX of the Oaklawn Municipal Code pertaining to sewer inspection for infiltration and inflow compliance at the point of property sale or transfer. F is resolution 2008-20, a resolution approving a professional engineering services agreement between the Village of Oaklawn and CDM Smith Incorporated for the 2020 sanitary sewer evaluation and rehabilitation program in the emergency sewer repair located at 4904 Oak Center Drive. NG is resolution 2008-21, a resolution approving a proposal for lawn care maintenance services between the Village of Oaklawn and H&amp;D Maintenance Incorporated. That is item seven. May I have a motion on item seven, please?
Motion approved.
Thank you. Trustee Mallow made that motion. Do I have a second? Trustee Vorder is our second. Any discussion, gentlemen?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to remove H.
Thank you. Anything else? I don't see a H, Alex. Can you say that again?
Well, on my agenda, it shows that H was cancellation of last Board of Trustees' meeting.
On this item H, you might be looking at a draft. So that's item H, and let's follow.
I'm sorry.
Yeah. So on items A through G, any discussion, gentlemen? Hearing none. Let's call the vote, please, on item seven.
Trustee Olenichuk.
Yes.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Phelan.
Yes.
Trustee Vorder.
Yes.
Trustee Mallow.
Yes.
Trustee Stalker.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. And now we're on item eight. And this is the cancellation of the Board of Trustees' meeting of the month, the last board meeting of the month. This is the fourth Tuesday beginning in May 2020, until further notice because of concerns regarding coronavirus. This was on the agenda last time and was tabled till this meeting for additional discussion. May I have a motion on item eight?
I'd like to motion to deny.
Thank you. We have a motion to deny. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Trustee Mallow is our second. Trustee Olenichuk made the motion. Any discussion? Trustee Desmond.
I think we probably shouldn't. Alex, do you want to discuss why we should postpone us or?
No, I'm motioning that we deny it, then we need to schedule the meeting. There's still village business that needs to be conducted. And actually, what I'd like to do is to have the next meeting done back at the village board table, practicing social distancing and all of the safe practices that we have. But we've got some business that's coming before the board, whether it's bids for our street package. I know that there's some new business that will be coming in, a possible development business, that would be nice to be able to have the meeting and be able to go forward with our village business.
Yeah, but I think if you're motion to deny it, it cuts off discussion. Am I right, Mayor? Should we?
I think we can be flexible, counsel. Any problem with discussion?
No.
Okay, so, Trustee Desmond, let's discuss this. We have motion to deny in a second. And now we're open for discussion.
Okay. Yeah, no, I just wanted to let Alex speak about it. My understanding was that if we agreed to deny, it would be off the table for discussion.
Okay.
That's not the case.
So this started when we had the virus just kind of starting. Village Hall closed itself to business, walk-in business. And then unfortunately, we had some layoffs, which all impact directly and indirectly preparing the agenda. So when this was put on, that was the thinking to make it more efficient in this period. Those bumps have been worked out. We have new staff working on the agenda. And it is going very, very well, I think. So it's not as critical. But I want to remind the board, they customarily do this in the summer as well. So whatever you guys want to do, I'm good with it. And this was just being cautious. So any other discussion? I think that was Trustee Stalker first.
Yes, it was. I understand why this is on the agenda, but I think it's more important than ever that the village board meet either this way or in person with social distancing and talk about the issues that face the village. And so we can move forward to get the village operating and especially some socially acceptable. operating in socially, some socially acceptable fashion. And I think we should continue the meetings as we have.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Mallow.
That was pretty much the same point I was going to try to make, exactly what Trustee Stalker said. Whether we meet virtually or in the board, I think it's something that we still need to do. It's different than any, it doesn't even feel like summer at this point. It feels like we're just still in the spring, or possibly still the winter. I'm not even sure where we're at. But I think, I think we need to get the business that needs to get done in an hour meeting. I think we could do that.
That's excellent. So we have a motion to deny. And a second, any other discussion? So we're voting on the motion to deny. Voting yes means we will still continue to have the meetings. So let's call that vote, please.
Trustee Olenichik?
Yes.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Trustee Phelan?
Yes.
Trustee Vorder?
Yes.
Trustee Mallow?
Yes.
Trustee Stalker?
Yes.
Motion passes to deny.
Thank you very much. Item nine is Resolution 2008-22, a resolution authorizing the village manager to engage a bond refinancing team to review and restructure existing village debt. May I have a motion on nine, please?
Both to approve.
That was Trustee Phelan, I believe. Do we have a second? Trustee Mallow is our second. Any discussion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, if I may?
Certainly.
There's really nothing notable about this, because the attorneys were speaking about already worked for the village largely in the capacity that I'm recommending, and Trustee Mallow and I spoke about. But this is just an effort to make a more dedicated team, whose charge is to look at our debt structure, especially in light of recent developments. If you saw the email that Vince Kankar sent today, Vince works with Bert Odelson. He and Bert Odelson have a lot of experience in economic development, which is what Bert Odelson does for the village and TIPS. And Paul O'Grady would be involved in terms of an issuer council. This eliminates a lot of extra hiring of outside council, which oftentimes happens or has happened in the past. It streamlines things. But really, it's just, I've felt for several months now that we're missing opportunities. It looks like Mr. Kankar identified some. And this is just a way to ensure that we have a dedicated team looking at this. We're going to be careful to make sure we don't spend a lot of money here. If there isn't opportunity to do anything, then we won't. But we need to be a little more nimble and responsive to the changing environment, especially given the rate environment that we're in. So that's the idea behind this.
It sounds good. Okay. Thank you, Tom. Any other discussion? Let's call the vote on item nine, please.
Trustee Olenichik?
Yes.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Trustee Phelan?
Yes.
Trustee Vorder?
Yes.
Trustee Mallow?
Yes.
Trustee Stalker?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Item ten is our Village Clerks Report. Jane.
Okay. Approval of semi-monthly disbursements, number 2020, dated May twelfth, 2020, in the amount of seven million, four hundred fifty thousand, four hundred seventeen dollars and sixty-four cents.
Thank you. May I have a motion on item ten A, please?
Motion approved.
Thank you. That was Trustee Olenichik. Do we have a second?
I'll second, ma'am.
Thank you. Trustee Vorder is our second. Any discussion? Let's call that vote, please.
Trustee Olenichik?
Yes.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Trustee Phelan?
Yes.
Trustee Vorder?
Yes.
Trustee Mallow?
Yes.
Trustee Stalker?
Yes.
Motion passes. That's it, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Item eleven, Village Presidents' Report. I just want to say, Oaklawn had a big thrill today with the flyover of the Blue Angels to honor our healthcare workers and first responders. What an incredible show for everyone. The photos, I was not able to see it exactly, but the photos were amazing. I saw a few videos. What a wonderful tribute. And, you know, gave us all kind of that little jolt to bring us all together and make us feel kind of it. Spirit was, it was really beautiful. If anyone got to see it, I think Trustee Vorder, you saw it.
Yes, yes, Mayor. I had the good fortune to be on the roof of Christ Hospital's parking garage on Costner Avenue. I thought I was going to get the best spot in town, but I was joined by about a thousand other residents. Also, yeah, many, many doctors and many, many nurses from this hospital. And when the planes flew over, I was so proud of all the residents. They all applauded and cheered the doctors and nurses. And so it was, it was a great honor for them, I'm sure, but a great honor for us to show our appreciation. And a great honor for the United States Air Force, I guess those planes are, or they could be Navy, okay, to give us a little bit of enthusiasm in this tough times. So it was very, very nice, Mayor.
Yeah. I was on the roof of the parking, the train station parking garage, and I was all as well. So if any, that shows that people can congregate if they are, if they behave responsibly and practice social distancing. The whole village were out and united in this. So it can be done. We can do it. So I think that's a great example of that.
Good point, Tim.
Madam Mayor, may I make a comment?
I'm sorry, is that Trustee Phelan?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
And I don't want to necessarily back to the global issue we've been speaking about, but Tim made a great point. And, you know, as I said earlier about the models and predictions and experts and who's right, who's wrong. The one thing that we do have, you know, whether it's good or bad, is we have a lot of test data in the form of large gatherings of people in the city of Chicago, house parties, New York City, street gatherings, Huntington Beach, thousand people. State of Florida has opened up their beaches and even their restaurants to interior seating, twenty-five percent, outside capacity. And the point I would make here, you know, when all else is being debated, is we are not seeing, you know, attendance spikes in these viruses. And I would argue, and argue strongly, that even if we were, the number of cases, it really, it really bothers me that the news every day starts with more cases, more cases. I mean, to me, I want to see more cases. You know, I don't want to see people get sick, but the more people that do get the virus, we get the herd immunity, it goes to show that the more people that get it and don't get ill or get seriously ill, it's more data still that it's localized with elderly people. But that's the thing with Tim just said, is, you know, you can believe experts, you can believe reports, you can look at data, but sometimes you just want to believe your eyes. And our eyes, I think, are telling us, not that it's not serious, not that it's not lethal, but that in terms of the overall approach and this blanket lockdown and this everybody has to follow the same rigid, rigid protocols, it's the easier thing to do. I don't mean to be critical of the people that do say that, but it's a lot easier to say just everybody stay in place for a little while longer. That actually was a term used. That doesn't sound like science or data. And when someone says twenty-five percent, why isn't it twenty-eight and a half percent? When someone says six feet, why isn't it five feet or nine feet? I'm not saying that these are, you know, completely random numbers. But on the other hand, again, I'll go back to this notion of sometimes, you know, it's incumbent upon us to be responsible to people that elected us, because we did get elected too. J.B. Pritzker did, Donald Trump did. But we are closest to the issue, just like every other local municipality is. We have our finger on the pulse of the community. And I just want to reiterate again and say what Tim just said. It's happening. You know, from the very beginning, I was in grocery stores, twenty people to an aisle grabbing bread, squeezing apples, touching cucumbers. And you just say to yourself, how is that not, you know, an outbreak of this pandemic? So I don't mean to repeat myself again, but I wanted to touch on what Tim just said.
Thank you very much. So the Blue Angels, Trustee Mallow, your family took a video that which was just spectacular. Thank you for sharing that. For those of us who couldn't see it and just missed it, thank you very much. I just want to last talk about our Emergency Management Agency. There was some talk, you know, about how Oaklawn's numbers are different because of, you know, we have a high percentage of seniors in Oaklawn, but many residents don't know we have actually five nursing facilities here. And yes, this virus targets anyone in that congregate setting, and it's brutal. And so we feel our numbers are skewed very much because we have this resource in the community. Our Emergency Management Agency in Oaklawn is in daily contact with them, making sure that they get the equipment, the PPE they need. And what has really impressed me is they've, he's put pressure on the county to make sure that they get this delivered to them from our stockpiles. So it's, there's no excuses now for people not doing what they need to do. So these nursing facilities have what they need, they better do it. And they, you know, we are on them. And our Emergency Management Agency is doing a good job with that, the whole team there. So, yes, was there a question?
Great point, Mayor. Great point.
So anyway, a lot of residents don't know we have that. And I think I just wanted to share that. So with that, I think that's all I've got to say. We have item twelve, Trustee Olenichik.
So moved.
Item twelve, motion to adjourn. Trustee Olenichik made the motion, seconded by Phelan. Going to give it to Trustee Desmond. Thank you very much. Any discussion? Let's call the vote, please.
All in favor?
Aye.
Most. Motion passes.
Thank you. We are adjourned.
Thank you. Good night, all.
Eight fourteen PM. Thank you.
Stay safe.
Yes, everyone, stay safe.